All right, six o'clock. We'll call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
The pledge extends to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Great. Also, remember your mission statement and courage of the communities. The mission of the Dover Plinton School District is to educate individuals in an environment of trust and respect so they become self-directed, responsible, lifelong learners. We want to remind the public that we value each other's opinions and we can respectfully disagree with one another while conducting our meeting in a professional manner. Okay, we'll call all members except Nicole Reno is absent this evening. Our superintendent, Hemstead, is with us, as well as our community director, Principal. All right. We're gonna change the agenda, nine point three. We are going to scrap that. We did not get the contract signed, so we're just going to take it off the agenda this evening. We'll be on next ones. All right, do we have a motion to put the agenda?
So move.
Motion by David, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. All those in paper say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public comments, rubber recognition. You said no one signed up to speak, look. Okay, any rubber recognition?
It's going to state. Yeah, or it's going to state, sorry. April seventh and eighth. Two teams that went to the sections, I think. Kudos to Beth and her team. That model UN just got that. They were one of the cities with Dana Hoppens. Kudos to them, had some like a great experience.
That boys' basketball finished, didn't have the open they wanted, but to make the section game, that was pretty awesome. And just want to shout out to Logan Bicker and Kate Knowles-Belly and Owen Leach of Oregon No Conference. And not to be bragging on, but Owen was named MVP for the second year of the road to the conference. Pretty proud of him.
Yeah, for sure.
So that was fun. And then we did the wrestlers last time, right? And track started, and baseball and softball, so under spring seasons.
Yeah, golf.
Golf field.
All going.
Awesome. How did we ever find out how the gamers did this first season? Have you had a report on that?
No, I haven't read anything on the gamers.
Please put it on. That'd be interesting.
Yeah, just see.
All right, and traps going again?
Yeah, traps starting.
And when does fishing club start?
Fishing club starts June.
Oh, that's what June, okay. All right, lots of fun things for our students, so.
Whatever Amy said.
Whatever Amy says.
Yeah.
All right, wonderful. Lots of good things happening for our kids, so that's fun. All right, so six point one, community education report. Tracy, I feel like we were doing last time.
I know.
We're doing more than purpose.
Oh, God.
What are we doing next?
Our summer rep, for sure, will go out on Friday. And registrations will go through December, or May first. And we do have our league rep meeting to plan all of our games and such on Wednesday night. We're gonna do a virtual one. I don't know if you draw the short straw, but I kind of chair that committee, so it's working with all of the towns around. But it's awesome because I think the nice part is when you're in this role is you kind of have that selfishness on when we want a home game and when we want an away game. So it's a good thing, so. And it works, everybody works so well together, so it's nice. So that'll happen on Wednesday night. We will have our annual class on when I'm in charge. It's kind of like staying home alone. We'll have that on May nineteenth. We'll work with Jeff Lee and sometimes Nicole Reno myself as well, inviting kids in so that we can get them, you know, stranger danger, biking, all of those things that they need to be aware of if they stay home in the summer alone or for a short period of time, just making them have the information that they need. We also looked at our transportation for summer rep. One thing we're gonna do a little bit different this year is if families need transportation, we're gonna actually ask them just to put in that request the week before so that if there's a way that we can utilize our smaller district bus, we will. And we do know that sometimes when kids go to those away games, it might be a ponytail softball game. A lot of the times, the bus might come back with one or two kiddos on there. So we know in advance, hey, maybe mom does want to drive their student to the game. It might help save on costs and try to be mindful of that as well as we look at summer. So it could be the large bus, it could be the smaller bus, or it could be a suburban. So working with ID needs a lot on that so that we can be as efficient as we can with the costs at that. Other than that, for summer rep, Bike to School Day is gonna be on May fourth. You do have on your agenda tonight to review and approve the post-prom rules. I've worked with the post-prom committee since December, and it's been a great, great group. Nicole Lightner has really taken the lead a lot on that. And they have raised well over $6,000. Their taco in a bag was a huge hit. They would show up to the game and the community ed would have the food ready. They just needed to serve it. So it was 100% profit for them on their end in addition to the fundraising that they did. It did help a lot, having that PCM grant, the $5,000 for the games, for post-prom games. So it's almost flawless. It's going really well, so it's awesome. Our K-2 basketball, starting, we're working again with Freddie Coleman who's down for power. He'll be coming in for Fridays for us and helping with K-2 basketball in the spring. We have K-2 volleyball, 3-4 volleyball, and 5-8 volleyball going on right now. So we have a lot of busyness in community ed. Lastly, we do have our senior spotlights that started. So we're showcasing our class of 2022. If they choose to want to be on there, we make sure that they're on there. So we're working with getting the senior spotlights ready. We're working on the yard signs and working on the senior video that will be played for graduation. So it's steady. Any questions?
Read me through the rules for post-prom.
Yes.
They're the same as the world.
Yes, okay. Yeah, and I actually reached out to Nicole this morning because one of the things that Mr. Lepard wanted to make sure was that it was in the handbook. So when the school board approved the handbook for high school, mirroring that into the rules, the only thing that's different is they're really choosing how they're distributing the prizes. And the reason I reached out to her this morning was if you look at the rules, it's important that we don't leave out the word DGF in certain parts of the rules because if we did, it wouldn't mirror what Mr. Lepard had in the handbook. So for example, if you have it in front of you, if you were to look at bullet number three, and Nicole said she just forgot to add that word in there. They did agree to that, too. They agreed with what it says. But I just wanted to make sure that they had in there a sophomore or guest of a DGF junior or senior must attend the DGF prom. Making sure all the DGFs are in there because we don't like to be misinterpreted that a junior or senior goes to another school prom and then comes here. So we just wanted to make sure that was clear that what you do have in front of you is what they approved. And she agreed, but she typed up the minutes a little quicker, so she wanted to make sure she got it in there. I will check in with you. Yeah, okay, yeah. And that's why you kind of added it to the handbook. No, but so.
All right. Thank you, Tracy. Board committee reports. Budget committee met last time. Forgot to text you to set a little note out.
I don't think we had a whole lot. No. Other than we are essentially on track right now from a budget standpoint. Trying to think of additional issues that are potential. I think transportation right now due to the costs and transportation contract is a little difficult. The, what would be called the header.
It feels like school.
It feels like school. Yeah, it's about, and I don't know, haven't I updated on that? But we're about $10,000 over what we had budgeted just because the price pretty much, it didn't double. Similar budgeted number there is off. So that, the price of caps is, yeah, in effect. But we've made it up in other areas. We are, we're on track for.
Construction budget, did we talk about where? I'll talk more about that on my report, too. Touch base on that.
Yeah, I think with regard to the project, I think Jim just said that we're about 61% here. Glendon, 59% in Dilworth, and we've got about 46% of that in costs or in our budget. So we're doing well there as well. But still a lot of things going on. Continue to see is an issue, of course, but making it through those things.
Anybody else have a committee meeting? All right, six point three, superintendent reports.
Yeah. So retreat work sessions and so on. And this is for the board. So I got here last summer and you guys had a retreat set up. And I just want to visit with you guys soon about what you're thinking and what I'm thinking. And so maybe we can do it in April or, believe me, whenever we do that walkthrough and go work, and we can do a work session. I'd like to have some discussion on what you guys are thinking and what I'm thinking as far as a get-together for the board and I as a work session this summer. And with the admin as well. So I'm gonna visit with them about that this Thursday to do some planning. Teacher placement. Teachers found out this last, or last week about where they're gonna be, what grade levels they're gonna be at and that information. So that was good to get some of that information out to them. Lot of questions, obviously, from them, and I don't blame them. I treat the same way. So that was important to get those things out. And I've got a little too, I've got a lot of stuff here, so I'm gonna try to go through some as quick as I can. MCA testing, that'll be coming up here in April, so just a heads up. That's, teachers are starting to go through their training to make sure they're prepared. Brittany Johnk is heading that up and has started again with those teachers and their training. So that's off to a good start with staff and the teacher. I'm sorry, the students will start that in April. Kindergarten roundup is a week from today? No, April fifth anyway. Can't figure that, is that a Wednesday? First, okay, Tuesday. So, yeah, so that's coming up. I know they're having a meeting today after school to talk about a little bit with teachers and kind of what that might look like. Excited to put some numbers. That's the one number I don't really have as far as the moment goes and how many sections we need. We're talking about having that repeat kindergarten scenarios of some of the discussions they were having tonight at the meeting. We'll get an official letter and all those things are ready to go. But the roundup looks awesome on that. Band choir trip, they leave this Thursday. I didn't get a chance to look through the itinerary today. Had some questions, but Mr. Lepard and I will meet on that tomorrow. That'll be okay. But they leave Thursday and they return Tuesday, I think, right? Yep, so that's coming up. Job posting. So as we had a chance to accept our retirements, which was kudos to those people and excited for them, that also left some opportunities for other people and some positions that are open. So we have posted the business teacher position. We posted an ag and an industrial tech position, both separately. We do have some apps on that, and I'll talk about that at the personnel committee meeting later. The AP and AP position, we're gonna interview a week from today, April fourth. We have 15 applicants this Wednesday. My plan is to reach out to the ones we're gonna interview to set up for Monday, April fourth, so. More to come on that. And then we also have a speech position. That was the one we were hoping to approve tonight. We do have somebody that has accepted. We're just waiting for a signature and contract. And then elementary yet, I think we have eight that have applied so far. That's one where it's a little bit of a wiggle. We don't know if we're gonna need somebody in kindergarten. Second grade's getting close to needing another person, too. So we're gonna kind of have to see what our numbers look like. And so that one, we'll put on hold here for a little bit until we kind of get that kindergarten round of times figured out. And so if we get closer to knowing our numbers, then we'll know what we need to do with that. Nice thing is there's eight. So if we need an extra kindergarten teacher and we need a second grade teacher, hopefully from this pool, we'll have two strong candidates that we could do that. Again, it's just gonna be based on numbers, right? So more to come on that. Subsection of speech, we're hosting March 29th. So that's, what, Thursday? No. It's tomorrow.
It's been a long week.
It's been a long week. But it's Monday. Oh, gee. Yeah, so kudos to, or we're gonna be hosting, so that's good. Our speech, I don't think anybody advanced there, but they were, they did a really nice job. I talked to Mary, or Mary, or Kathy Martin. Kathy Martin the other day. So she said she was really proud of her team. Model UN, we just talked about that. They just were down in the cities over the weekend. So thank you to Dana and bringing those troops there. We talked about Nollak already, making it to state. So congrats to Beth and her team. Construction update. David did talk about 59% complete in Dilworth, 61% in Glendon, and that was as of early last week. With everything here, it's been moving better. And as we did our walkthrough before the meeting tonight, you guys saw it, too, at this site, you know, things are starting to look more completed, I guess. It's a lack of better way to say it. I do have a shop meeting tomorrow with Foss and Comstock at nine o'clock to discuss where they're finalizing those so we can get that started as well. What else? Oh, we have, or I have, and Tracy, I think, is attending on behalf of Glendon, the city of Glendon, is we have the Quik County Joint Powers Intergovernmental Retreat this Friday. And so I'll be there all day Friday. One of the things they've asked me to do is just to do self, or to share some celebrations at DGF School throughout this pandemic. So a lot of things that are negative, but what's been positive. So I really like that this is the approach we're gonna take. And so it's leading with optimism and collaboration. So great theme, and so I'll be sharing with that group of people Friday. That's it. Questions?
We don't know, do we want to walk through there or have that session yet?
Yeah.
At the end of the meeting, step one, or?
I'm wide open on that as far as walking through the Dilworth site and then having a little work session. If you want to do it before the next board meeting or right after the next board meeting. Not sure if we have personnel tonight. You know what next month is? Facility, so. Anybody, everybody want to stay up for the facilities? That would make kind of sense if we could do it then, or?
We're doing the festival, we could.
Oh, that's right, you did share that.
Yeah, the old dates.
So I'm open, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, you guys can do it.
Yeah, we could either do it after the meeting on the 11th or is the 18th too far out?
I don't think that's cool. There's not a date.
18th is the day after Easter, I suppose.
I can come in, I can make the work, so it's up to you.
We could do it April 4th, too, for that.
No, we have interviews. Let's just know about it. Maybe we'll send out a couple of date options. I'll have her.
Yeah, so this Friday, I'll send you an update. My last Friday was short this week, so that would be here today, if you remember. But I can send that out Friday, too, and throw some possibilities. Brooke and I can visit and throw some dates out, and hopefully we can choose one.
Okay.
Doesn't have to be a Monday night, too.
No, that'd be a different.
It doesn't have to be for me, but it's up to you guys.
I'd just like to do it before.
Later, yeah.
Yeah, I would agree. Other questions? You know, the other thing I should have said, too, is if you guys look at our budget, which we'll get into next, you know, as far as the consent agenda. Our percentage, as you look at the top, March 24th, we are in that 61-ish percentile. And in February into March, we should be between 58 and 67. This is a little, obviously, over halfway through March on these bills, that's the 24th. So our number looks good there. Talked to Marcus this morning. He felt that we'd be closer to maybe 63%. We're supposed to be at 67, so kind of back to what David shared is that we're on budget and maybe we'll have, or not maybe, we are, but we'll have a schedule there. And then with the construction, we are at 46% remaining in the bank, so. That's positive. Number two.
Any further questions?
For that ag teacher, that would be for, like, is that for freshmen through?
So the business, the ag, and industrial tech.
Because those are three separate.
Yep, yep. Business, ag, and industrial tech speeches will be everything. But, yep, those are three, those are all. Those three positions will affect, I would say, seven, 12. Not so much the fifth and sixth, but although there will be seventh and eighth graders affected by the ag and/or the industrial tech.
Is that, is that gonna blend, you know, potentially with the career academy? Because I know Morehead is now starting up an ag program and wanting to get into FFA and all.
Yep, and that's gonna be kind of what we're hoping to get started here, too, and get them going on it. And then as far as, so with the career academy, those are, can be advanced classes for our kids. We just need to get it started here. And it'd be nice to have our own chapter, or do we work with Morehead on that? I, you know, I know that they had somebody in place for that. Then I've heard that that was, they were struggling with the personnel piece. I'm not sure, I haven't followed up lately on that, where they're at with that. We, we have one person that's applied that has a license, so we're gonna have some discussions soon. The industrial tech, we also have somebody that's very interested, and we are very interested in that person. I'll just say it that way. Nothing official's happening, but something soon will happen officially. With that position, the business, at this time, we don't, haven't had any applications yet. But that was just posted as well, so.
Do we have to have a question?
That's something that's been discussed at length, and the principals came back with me, to me, saying, no, not at this time. So I can get into more of that during our personnel committee meeting as to what their plan is. They do have a plan, because I asked them the same question. And then after they explained themselves to me and how their schedule's gonna work, it did make sense, so. That's what they want to do for now, and I said, okay. So we can talk about that at personnel committee, so. Yeah, good, good question.
And just to reiterate for the public, if they're watching at home, we, a lot of our students need prerequisites before they go over to Career Academy. That's why we're now looking at a main teacher, industrial tech, to get them interested in it before they get to ninth and 10th grade and not be having any exposure to it.
Right, we want them to be successful when they go over there and feel like they fit and they belong. That's been kind of a shortcoming so far, I guess.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions? Great, moving on. Seven point one, approval of the regular March 14, 2020 meeting. We have a motion. Motion by Amy, is there a second?
Aye.
Second by David, all those in paper say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda, claims of the com score. Eight, four dollars and 52? Yep. Also included in your packet is the monthly budget report. We have two resignations. Resignation of Morgan Richards, elementary teacher affected the end of the 21, 22 school year. And resignation of Kelsey Kowmeyer, I apologize. ECE teacher affected the end of the 21, 22 school year. Also, to approve a donation from the Dilworth Fair Department in the amount of $500 to use for Dilworth Elementary DGF school middle school student needs. Thank you for that donation. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Motion by David, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amy, any questions or discussion?
I had a quick question on one of the line items. It said there was a $4,200 payment to the Career Academy for the students that are being there, and I'd never seen that before. And I emailed Marcus, and he just said that it was the first.
First semester.
Or something like that, so I'm just wondering what that was.
So it was our first semester. It was the number of students that attended. And then times our agreement that we agreed to, it was 700 a student for the semester. And they each took two classes, so it was 350 a class. So when we got the original bill, I almost paid it without telling Morehead that they were wrong. But I thought it would be best to say that it was a mistake. So they were, they were 700 short, so we've corrected it. It's 4,200, it's to pay for our first semester kids attending that. And then we'll have more here the second semester, so that probably will be in June. I'm assuming we'll see that dealt because we need to clear it up before July. Does that answer? Yeah.
Question, welcome to, I wasn't familiar with the one line item for, I don't remember. Is it called center stage construction or center?
Yeah, we had, we had over 1.1 million of these bills this time.
There's a lot of other bills, but that's one account I didn't recognize the name of. It had other Cs.
Well, I highlighted some Cs here, too, so let's look again. Center stage manufacturing. Yep, for 78.
I don't know what they.
Center stage, I'd have to go back and look at that invoice. Center stage, I don't know. It could have been steel related.
It didn't sound like any of the other contractors that we've paid before, so that's sort of.
Yeah, me, I'll dig into that one, just to make sure again. I have this stack on my desk that Brooke was kind enough to print out for me today. I did not get it through before this meeting today. So it's a pretty healthy stack, and they were in that stack. So, because I'd asked her for the printout of this 1.1 million, because I just gotta go through everyone now.
Yep, did anybody see anything else? I didn't, nothing stuck up to me. Anybody else? All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in paper say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nine point one, post-prom rules. Do we have a motion? Motion by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura, any discussion or questions? Great, any more discussion or question? All those in paper say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nine point two, reading map interventionists. This is for, reading and map interventions for Kit Foster, Amy Redman, and Barbara Wollas. Wollas affected the start of the 22, 23 school year. Do we have a motion? Motion by Redding, is there a second?
Second.
Second by David, any questions or discussion?
We have to hire more, or is this?
There's, there's, there's one more that we did not get a signed contract for. She's working through retirement. He's taking sure that it all makes sense. She had some great questions last week. We met her. I think it's a formality, but I understand what she's trying to make sure of first. And so I am very confident that that's gonna happen. The one thing that might, we might have to wait until June because of some PRA and PRA rules that she's, she's had different jobs in her career. And so we might have to wait till June to go through it. But, yeah, there'll be one more coming. So there will be five in the elementary and one in the middle school. That's the part we've met about last week. Just feel that early intervention is vital in the elementary. And because we still have two full-time interventions on staff that we're paying to sites to use interventions.
Yep. And is this what we're using Esser funds for?
This, we can use Esser funds for this one more year. The people that you just approved are coming on in a different capacity. And, and I'll explain that in the personnel committee meeting. Or I could do it now too. They are going to work twenty hours a week. If you notice the names, the people we just accepted retirements from. So got a little creative so that we can sustain interventions for years to come without using Esser funds. So we've worked out a deal with them to work a hundred and twenty-two day contract. They'll work twenty hours a week. They'll work from nine to two, Monday through Thursday. So they get a little kind of a retirement, but they still get to help our kids. And we're very excited to have professional teachers work as interventionists with our elementary kids. And that's what they want to do. And we're super excited to have them help. You do notice that Kit Foster is on that list and he wants to help elementary kids in the future. And so he signed up as well. So we're very excited again for him and our kids. So it's, it's bringing, so very fortunate that these ladies and gentlemen are excited to help us and work with our kids. I think this, you guys will see a significant impact. And it's something we can sustain for years to come. Yeah, very excited.
Perfect. So we have a motion by Brittany, a second by David. Any further questions? All those in paper say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. All right, next board meeting is Monday, April eleventh, six p.m. on the school media center, followed by facilities and transportation at conclusion. We, I will work with Shannon to find a date to meet over in Dover. Come together and figure a couple of dates out and then a work session. Also want to remind the public, if you're watching, please check out our website. This is our shameless club. Please come work for the school district if you want to be a substitute. What else?
Transportation.
Driver.
Paraprofessionals.
Anything and anything.
Yep.
We, please check out our website or call the district office. Rhonda would be happy to speak to anybody.
For sure.
She's not here, so we can.
Yeah, we can say that.
Okay, so anything else, team? All right, six thirty-one, eating spirit. Like five minutes and personnel will get started.